Welcome to the League of Women Voters to Tacoma Pierce County General Election Candidate Forum for University Place City Council. I'm Leah Zepeta. I'm the moderator for this forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, we welcome the candidates and the audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters to Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by the traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Dehoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 103 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone 16 years or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, l w v t p c dot org. That's l w v t p c dot org. The candidates in tonight's forum in ballot order for University Place City Council Positions Two are Frank Boykin and Sadia Wahid. And for Position Seven are Melanie J. Grassi and Alicia Cunningham. The general election is November 7th. If you're not registered or have moved, you may register or change your address online at vote wa dot gov. That's vote wa dot gov. By Monday, October 30th. If you are already registered as a voter and your address is correct, your ballot will be mailed out on October 20th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM Tuesday, November 7th. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website. That's l w v t p c dot org. L w v t p c dot org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters and by our cosponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Carrie Baker of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. She has a timer that's set to time and will remain operating and the candidates will be able to see it. So please stay on gallery view so that you can see us and the timekeeper. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourself when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. Again, if they want to send questions, they can send it to this number. A reminder that civility is expected. I asked each of you to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues and not making any personal comments or attacks. Please confirm by giving me the thumbs up. You can do it with your actual thumb or you can do it. Yes, there we go. The actual thumb is a little quicker. Okay. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can take up to one minute for a closing statement. The order of the opening two-minute statements for University Place City Council is in ballot order. So we'll start with Frank Boykin, then Sadia Wahid, then Melanie Grassi, then Alicia Cunningham. Mr. Boykin, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself to some, to reintroduce myself to others. I'm Frank Boykin, candidate for University Place City Council, Position Number Two, and I'm really excited to be here. My wife, my bride Alice, we've called University Place home for nearly 20 years. During that time, I've served you well on your planning commission as its vice chair. Since oh, 10 years or so, I've also been able to demonstrate what powerfully good information and works that had been done in University Place. As I think about the expectation that we have for residents and when it comes to University Place and leadership, I want to underscore two things. The first is I'm ready. If you have seen University Place and the vision that we now see, I have been part of the team that has made that vision real, all the way from looking at our town center as well as the expectation of the neighborhood improvements that has made University Place attractive and preserved our community character. This has been my charge as your planning commissioner in University Place and its leadership. I'm ready. Also, I have more than 25 years of business experience with United Parcel Service, UPS' leadership, that will help us with community partnerships, help us with leadership, and help us ensure that we elevate the city's profile and impact and empower the region's synergy. All of these things make a really important impactful statement when it comes to our city's potential. I ask you for your support. I ask you for your vote as I lead on our University Place City Council.
Thank you. Ms. Wahid?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sadia Wahid, and I'm truly honored to be here as a candidate for the City Council of University Place. Let me first start by thanking our local government, our city council members, who have given us an excellent infrastructure on which we can build upon. This community holds a very special place in my heart, and I'm deeply passionate about making it an even better place to live, work, and raise our families. We are a diverse community with diverse experiences, dreams, and aspirations. It is a place where families like mine have found a home, where our children grow up, our elderly feel cherished, our businesses thrive, and where I dreams take flight. I'm dedicated to our community's welfare. Our young family, like many of yours, sees University Place not just as a town but as a vibrant nurturing environment that we can all flourish, where we can all flourish. It is this commitment that fuels my passion to give back, to serve, and to work tirelessly to make our city even better. We face many pressing issues that demand innovative solutions. Public safety is not just about law enforcement. It's about creating a sense of security and belonging for every resident. Affordable housing is not just about new buildings. It is about building futures and ensuring that nobody is left behind. Our small businesses are not just economic entities. They are the lifeblood of our community, shaping its character and vitality. Together, we can create a University Place where public safety is unwavering, housing is within reach for everyone, and our small businesses thrive. I believe in the power of our collective strength and the potential we have to overcome challenges and achieve greatness. I'm here to listen, to learn, and to work tirelessly on your behalf. Let's join hands and shape a brighter future for University Place. We can build bridges for understanding, nurture compassion, and empower one another. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Grassi?
Well, good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Thank you all who are watching from University Place. I am Melanie Grassi, and I am running for University Place City Council, Position Seven. I've lived in University Place for over 30 years. This is my home, and now as a widowed mother of two, I'm raising my children in our wonderful city. I've grown up here volunteering at our various city events, University Place Duck Days, Treasures in the Park, our UP Festival, and I watched my father, Ken Grassi, help build this city alongside many of you, and what I learned from him is invaluable. I learned that this city is special, and I've learned that it's all about the people, and it's about listening to each one of you, that I have two ears and one mouth for a reason, and that's to listen more than I speak. And I have grown up leading, helping lead our small business in University Place, Grassi's Restaurant Day. Perhaps I've served you in our restaurant. Currently, I am the executive pastor of our church foundation and the new school at Chambers Day right here in University Place. I've also founded our University Place Food Pantry. And through my community service and small business leadership, this community is special. I'm excited to serve each one of you, but we have a job to do. Public safety is my number one priority. I served as a volunteer with our recent Prop One campaign to increase our police presence and reduce response times in our city, but we have more work to do, and I'm excited to be a part and to bring that conversation back, to continue to make this community safe for every resident. I want to bring back a vibrant Parks and Rec Department for youth sports, for our children, activities for seniors, so that our community can thrive and our quality of life can be enhanced and support small business. I ask for your support, and I'm thankful for you to be here tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us. Thanks so much for supporting candidacy and the opportunity to use your voice and your power for good. I'm Alicia Cunningham, and I'm running for University Place City Council, Position Seven. I'm running because I'm a longtime resident of this community, and I have lived here my entire life of 41 years. I'm currently raising my family here in University Place, and it's important to me to ensure that our city maintains its integrity, its strength, and the beauty that we know it to be. I am currently your park commissioner and have a wide range of civic engagement involvement as well as business and leadership experience. I am endorsed by Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland as well as outgoing incumbent for this seat, Caroline Belisi, along with many other strong and current elected officials. My priorities for this city are clear: parks and recreation, business retention and recruitment, and public safety. All of these are vital to the growth and development of our community and our citizens. I will be the best advocate to support these efforts, to represent you, and listen to your needs. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. For some questions, I might indicate 60 seconds. And again, live question, live audience questions can be texted to 253-948-6029. The candidate order will rotate in each, so for each question. So for question number one, we will start with Sadia Wahid. The first of three questions that we're going to be talking about have to do with the comprehensive plan requirements that were stated by the Pierce County Council. So the comprehensive plan requirement set by the Pierce County Council in compliance with the Growth Management Act require the city of University Place to have 5,620 new housing units by 2044. That's 5,620 new housing units. Of these, nearly 75% or about 4,250 housing units must be affordable for households with incomes below 120% of median income. So the question about is then, what is your plan to ensure that there are 4,250 affordable housing units built in University Place to meet this requirement? Sadia Wahid?
Thank you for the question, Leah. First of all, I want to start with saying that everyone needs to have access, as the city is, it's our responsibility to provide all the amenities that all of us enjoy to everyone who lives here. Our teachers, we have an amazing school district, so we have a lot of teaching staff, and we need to ensure that they live locally. That's just one set of our community. We need to reserve land that is particularly for this purpose. We need to create a criteria for, you know, entering into these units, duplexes, triplexes, or accessory dwelling units, because more often than not, apartment buildings and complexes are built, but then people who can afford market value housing are, you know, start residing in these places. So the purpose and the intention then is wasted. So if I'm elected, if I'm on the council, I will ensure that we have a strict criterion to enter into these buildings, into these residential units that are already present, and then identify areas of, you know, density of population growth and areas that can also support these, you know, accessory or these new units, which support in the sense that the infrastructure is available for that. There's playgrounds, there's enough space for parking, there's enough traffic regulation, there's enough, you know, resources available.
Thank you. Melanie Grassi, what is your plan to ensure that there are 4,250 affordable housing units built in University Place to meet the requirements of the Pierce County Council?
Well, thank you for the question. I believe that University Place is a very desirable community for people to come in and live, and I'm excited to welcome them and to welcome families at every price point. We have to make sure that we have attainable housing for people to be able to have their start in University Place. And as I'm talking to developers and with our departments, it's important that we streamline the process for housing providers, that we have regular temperatures of what our permitting volume is, that we have regular relief valves of third-party reviewers to be able to get in there and streamline the process so that our developers and that our housing providers that want to be able to provide this housing get to a yes. We want to make sure that what we're doing in our department is helping them get to the yes. We're helping them. We're giving them accurate timelines. We're giving them accurate benchmarks to meet, and that we're staying in communication with our neighbors and existing residents. It's so important to be communicating with the housing providers, with those that want to move into our city, and with the residents to know what's coming into their neighborhood, what would work best for their neighborhood, what sizes work best for their neighborhood. When we look at middle housing, there's lots of things that University Place needs, as such as row housing, cottages, townhomes, condos. We have lots of options for people to move into our incredible community. The infrastructure has to be ready, that our police presence and public safety have to be ready, the schools have to be ready for the growth, but this requires us all working together in tandem, and I believe that I can bring that together leadership-wise and make the conversation happen.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham, what is your plan to ensure that there are 4,250 affordable housing units built in University Place?
Currently, it's running around 93 days to approve permits within the county. We definitely need to advocate for slower, you know, faster time because that's, you know, it took 700 days to create the Empire State Building. So clearly, we have work to do around the permitting side to make sure that we have adequate housing and a timeline that's suitable for families. Working with developers is very important, being able to network incentives to provide the housing, much like my opponent said, middle housing is very important. We have nothing in between. For these first-time homebuyers, they need an option. We need to free up housing so that the elderly can age in place. We need to make sure that there's adequate substantial opportunities so that everyone in our community has a place to go, whether that's, you know, a condo, or whether they want to buy a luxury high-rise, or whether they want to have a, you know, large family home. So we need all types of housing, low income, moderate income, luxury high-rises, all of them. We don't have enough housing, and this also inoculates the unhoused opportunities that we have, that we, you know, it's our duty to inoculate. So we need to implement this correctly, and it's our responsibility to implement the new laws that are in place while keeping the character and the integrity of our city going and while providing more inventory for everyone that lives in our community.
Thank you. Frank Boykin. You're on mute.
Thank you so much. I've just been so mindful of following the rules and not being on mute and being on mute. Let me make it a point to say I'm just really appreciative of being able to answer the question, because having been a planning commissioner in University Place for more than 10 years, I know exactly how we should move in this process. Let me tell you the first thing that requires. It requires relationships, relationships that have been nurtured and relationships that have been leveraged, not just in our legislature, not just in our state engagement, but also on our planning commission and within our community. I've done that. It takes a real specific skill to invite people to the table at the appropriate time, and it takes the appropriate negotiation to make the whole place attractive. We've been leaning into that by being very specific about what the vision of University Place is, and as we built that out from every space of our town centers and neighborhood improvements, as well as in spaces that ensures that we have grown with community character at the forefront, we've done exactly what we need to do to bring the right people to the table to ensure that we can grow and grow responsibly. When it comes to specifically looking at the number of units, we need to be mindful of legislative mandates. We need to be mindful of affordability when it comes to housing. We need to be mindful of density, and we need to be mindful of how that comes together to ensure that the right people are moving forward with the right plan. I have done that for our city. I've done that for our planning commission, and I look forward to continuing doing it as I lead on University Place City Council.
Thank you. The next question also has to do with the comprehensive plan requirements that were created. The city of University Place has to accommodate 726 units of permanent supportive housing and 981 units for those who do not need support but have incomes below 30% of median income, so very low incomes, to ensure that they are not rent burdened. A one-person household at this income would pay no more than 565 a month. So what is your plan to ensure that nearly 726 units of permanent supportive housing and 981 units of very low-income housing are built in University Place to comply with the Growth Management Act? Where will they be built and how will they be funded? We'll begin with Melanie Grassi.
Thank you again for the question. Again, as I'm talking with developers, and I'm so glad that I've been able to learn from a lot of them, and one of the largest housing providers in our city, and they really want to be able to provide more subsidized voucher housing, and that's another way that we can offer this housing. The SHAG development that's coming in and offers senior housing will also be part of that plan. As we look at the Northeast Business District, there's places in that area that can be a part of it as well, but this all comes back to conversation and communication and what we need. And I believe the city, what we can do as leaders is really partner with organizations, partner with the housing providers, and have conversations at the county level, at the state level, to work in collaboration to help this very important fraction of housing that we need to provide. There is not enough housing. It is a crisis. And like I said before, I want University Place to be a city that everybody has an opportunity to live and thrive at every price point, to be attainable for everybody. And so to do that, it's going to require us to maybe do some little creative thinking. It's going to require us to dig in. It's going to require us to have wonderful relationships with our housing providers. And so I'm excited to grow and to build on those relationships that I've already established and then enhance that in my leadership in this city, and I'm thankful that we're able to get the job done and excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham, what is your plan to ensure that nearly 726 units of permanent supportive housing and 981 units of very low-income housing are built in University Place to comply with the Growth Management Act? Where will they be built and how will they be funded?
I think that we immediately need to seek the government's help. We need networking with developers. We need to listen and communicate, because, you know, having that low-income opportunities is not a bad thing. It's something that we want to welcome, because if we're going to be for all families and all communities, then we have to accommodate what that looks like. So we need to ensure that zoning accommodates low-income housing. We already have a relationship with PSH already, so we need to ensure that we don't lose them, and we need to be at the county level advocating and listening to make sure that there's accommodations for all families and all communities that are going to come in here. All of the apartments that are currently being built at this time, we need to make sure that there's an opportunity for that. You know, growth means growth for everyone, and so we need to make sure that we're listening and everyone's around the table to have those conversations.
Thank you. Frank Boykin, please.
Thank you so much. This is a comprehensive solution. This means that we need to make sure that we are using the relationships at the state level, certainly at the county level, at the city level, and certainly in community. As we move into the expectation of really low-income housing and the permanence of it, we have to ensure that those partners are at the table. How do we do that and how do we do it well? Let's take a look and see what leadership has offered in our space thus far. We can take a look at the Pierce County Council, who has made it a point to share with us the Maureen Howard Affordable Housing Ordinance that actually provides additional increased funding for affordable housing development. With that ordinance, the expectation also to address both the expectation of rural wealth gaps as well as the impact of racial impact to that wealth gap. And in ensuring that is moving forward, it is done through increasing homeownership in that aspect. Finally, there's an expectation of looking at the area median income with percentages that are favorable to ensure that, again, long-term solutions are in fact in place. So when you look at the additional 20% of that individual funding being dedicated to ensure that it impacts housing-related services and other mental health opportunities, that's where we can move forward, and that's what I suspect we'll do if you allow me to lead on our city council.
Thank you. Sadia Wahid?
Thank you. I actually agree with all my fellow candidates. This is something I can feel, we all feel really passionate about. Again, it's about access. Everyone needs to have equal access to the city's amenities and, you know, facilities. I believe this is, if this, you know, it's such a crucial thing, we need to ask, seek the government's help, partner with developers, have zoning and land use policies in place. We need to provide some property tax incentives for this particular kind of housing to lower the burden, provide or arrange for low-interest loans, and provide some tenant protection plans. All these things and more, I mean, we need to collaborate and communicate and, you know, brainstorm ideas and approach this problem as a crucial problem, something that needs immediate attention. So once we do that, once we collaborate as a council, you know, as a team, and we brainstorm, we've identified the gaps, and then we brainstorm to provide solutions. These are some of the solutions that I could think of, and I believe this is something that can be solved, given the right resources and given the right time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Alicia Cunningham. The comprehensive plan requirement set by Pierce County in compliance with the Growth Management Act require that the city of University Place make available 344 additional emergency housing beds in University Place. So the question is specifically, how many shelters do you envision to house the required 344 beds in University Place? And where would they be located within University Place? And how would they be funded? Alicia Cunningham?
Yeah, so currently, we have a senior center on 27th, and it's an attractive location. And once we have our SHAG community that moves in on 27th on that street, then we'll be able to accommodate, you know, a lot more activity in that senior center. I can envision that senior center being actually a location where they would love to be able to welcome emergency shelter opportunities. We currently have nothing of that nature, and we have to outsource to the county to, you know, in our neighboring jurisdictions. So it would be nice to be able to accommodate our own community of 300 beds. I know that we'd be able to get the funding from private sector funding, where I'm known to do and available to do and have accommodated a lot of our park projects through that factor. We don't have to necessarily be in that public funding or do a levy or a bond to make that happen. I'm certain that we would be able to get that revenue that would be able to come back to our community, to support our community. 300 beds is not over the top, and we have lots of locations within our community that would be able to manage that and support that, and our community would welcome that because we have an, we have an instinctual desire to help our citizens and community that are in University Place, and we would be able to accommodate what that looks like. And I know that from a funding perspective, we'd be able to fund that easily.
Thank you. Frank Boykin, where would you locate the 344 beds in University Place and how would they be funded?
We absolutely want to take advantage of our neighborhood districts and our process to ensure that we've got the best places identified, not just because of the leadership that we see from a perspective of ideal land, but also we want to be sure that we are maintaining our community character in whatever solution moves forward. In doing that, we have to make sure that we're meeting up, meeting people where they are, and making sure that those types of considerations have full scope, have full engagement, and have full benefit of the relationships that have been fostered to make these opportunities available. It is ideal to talk specifically about spaces where we absolutely don't see anticipation of this type of solution, but also there's opportunities to talk about reimagining ways in which we can position this type of solution in ways in which haven't been brought again to the forefront. The expectation of how it is that we get to those particular pathways is to ensure that the engagement is authentic, to ensure that the relationships are being fostered and being nurtured and being positioned to ensure that that is part of the solution as well. And then, of course, ensuring that community is at the forefront of that expectation, being well in front of that, being really clear about what that looks like, gives us an opportunity to really come up with solutions that can stand the test of time.
Thank you. Sadia Wahid?
Thank you. I believe we have to first look at the root causes of homelessness. It's usually domestic violence. Unemployment is one of the bigger ones. We need to provide housing, like beds, that is also secure. Like Frank said, it has to be by putting our community in the forefront as well and maintaining the character of our community. We can create these by partnering with NGOs, and we can use community centers, or we can build... and we can use community centers or we can buildings. We can partner with hospitals. We can, you know, involve case managers and social workers. We can onboard them. And most of all, we need to create some, you know, raise public awareness around this issue. And I mean, it's, it's going to be a multi-faceted approach to this problem. It, it's going to come. We, we see this in big cities and are close proximity with Seattle. This is something that will seep into our city, you know, very soon. We have started seeing this. So we need to look at the bigger picture. We need to look long term. Again, having our community, the present cities and keeping the character in mind, keep preserving our character. So these are some of the ideas that I have. We do have a lot of, you know, vacant buildings around and we can always partner with buildings, they, hospitals. Three hundred and forty-four beds, again, is not that many. We can join, you know, our resources, join, join hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Grassi.
Thank you for the question. I think that emergency beds and housing is vital and is a growing need in our city. And I think a key ingredient to leadership is knowing the right questions to ask and of whom and who you have at your disposal. And a wonderful leader of emergency housing is the leader of the Tacoma Rescue Mission, who also happens to be a University Place resident, Duke Paulson. And he is passionate about helping his community thrive and he is a leading voice in this area of emergency housing. So number one, I would lean to him on his expertise and asking the right questions. Also, in my time serving at the Tacoma Rescue Mission at the Emergency Women's Shelter with victims of domestic violence, security is number one when you're talking about emergency housing. So when we do place these beds, which I believe is vital, they have to be secure and they have to be loved and they have to be cared for by people who are passionate about it. University Place, we have wonderful faith communities. We have wonderful groups, Families Unlimited Network and others that are really passionate about serving in this way. Serving victims of domestic violence, serving families in emergency needs. And so our city is poised to wrap our arms around these families and individuals that need emergency response. When we put them in our, to our city, they need to be in areas that are secure, that are able to be mobile and set up at a moment's notice and that can be able to accommodate all varieties of ages, from seniors to children so that the quality of life for them and the neighboring around them are enhanced and secure.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Frank Boykin. What will you do to support police accountability and promote social justice in University Place?
Absolutely. What I would do to promote social justice and really be responsive to police accountability is making a point to ensure that we've got clarity about the relationship that we are looking for these entities to be in alignment when it comes to the impacts for our community's protection and our community's cares. We have often had the balance of community safety, of economic vitality as well as the expectation of community growth. And oftentimes, those three things are two sides of the same coin. What runs through all of those things in my view first is knowing that we've got safety, safety in a situation where when it comes to police accountability, that those relationships have been fostered and those expectations of what impacts moving our situations forward are authentic and hand in hand. And when it comes to the expectation of social justice, that we are absolutely swift when it comes to things that are intolerable and that our stability as well as our expectation of seeing one another is really reflected in how we engage one another and how we respond when there is an opportunity for us to come together. These are the two things that I deem to be most important when it comes to responding in the fashion that you have asked.
Thank you. Sadiya Wahid, what would you do to support police accountability and promote social justice in UP?
Our police force is extremely congenial and very competent. But we need to, you know, enhance more transparency, provide whistleblower protection. Sensitivity training, I think, is very, very important. Anyone that is any law enforcement needs to go through this mandatory sensitivity cultural training. So they are able to, because our community is a very diverse community. They need to be able to converse with everyone. They need to be able to understand different kinds of plights. There needs to be independent oversight. We need to invest in body and dash cams. There needs to be training on de-escalation and use of force policies and emphasizing non-lethal methods. These are some of the things that I could think of. But my number one priority would be creating and enforcing sensitivity training, a kind of a cultural sensitivity training for our law enforcement agents. And also maybe, you know, invest in some kind of neighborhood watch, like independent kind of things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Grassi.
Thank you for the question. I, I, three ways I can think of at the top of my head. One is actually happening this Saturday in University Place. And that is an event where police services and local communities can come together and have a conversation. When University Place, you may not be aware of it, the University Place Police Department, the NAACP, Washington State Patrol, West Pierce, other local service agents, South Sound nine-one-one are all gathering at the Monarch Theater to have an opportunity to have interactions with families and kids and have that, those regular conversations. And so that they can have an ongoing relationship with our emergency service providers and the police. More events like that, more opportunities to be engaged together need to happen in our community. I'm excited about the first one that's happening this Saturday. Other things that housing providers provide right now are called knock and talks, which bring housing providers together and community leaders and our first responders to have those non-threatening ways to communicate about what's happening in their housing provider area and their apartment complex, in their town home developments. Those are really important. Our crime-free program that the city leads from our public safety team is so important. That's something that I want to see enhanced as well. When it comes back to the, this question, it's all again about conversation and about a relationship. And I am proud to be endorsed by our, our last three chiefs of police in University Place. And what I've learned from them is that they are passionate about meeting the community where they're at.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham.
Yes. So we are currently contract services and we will continue to oversee the county actions and insist on top-level performance. And like one of the others said, Sadiya said, that officers have body cams and receive de-escalation training. And we do that through our internal structures. I think an accountability board would be nice, a public accountability board to make sure and ensure that while we are a contract, we are able to at least come together to assure that we have, you know, accommodations and equity within all of our citizens as they engage with police. I think it's definitely something that we need to hone in on, given our current climate in the world. It's a constant conversation that we have to maintain and make sure that we're having. And I think our city is no different and we're not exempt from that. I think it's important to maintain that level of transparency. And I also think that it's, it's important to maintain, you know, to keep up with our growth. Because as we continue to grow as a population and a community, we're going to need to accommodate that every step of the way. So whether we're contracted or we have our own staff, we need to ensure that there's accountability on all fronts.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Sadiya Wahid. Given the expectation for significant growth, what are your thoughts about expanding alternatives to cars such as public transit, bikes, walking and making it safe and viable, a, a safe and viable solution for density?
Thank you for the question. Our state, our city, you know, prides itself on an outdoor sea, you know, providing this outdoors experience. People want to move to our state for that. So we need to provide more opportunities and avenues where people can, you know, without any, you know, fear for their lives or like, you know, security are able to indulge in those kind of activities. We need to provide more sidewalks, bike lanes. I have, personally, I saw the growth of Chambers Lane. You know, they added sidewalks and bike lanes recently and it was just a fantastic experience for me. Driving every day, taking my school, kids to school, the traffic did not stop. What I'm trying to say is that our city is, is so amazing, like the, you know, we, we want change and people support that. And people want those, you know, additions, even though it was a little bit of an inconvenience in the beginning. We need more streetlights so people are able to walk or, you know, bike or, you know, indulge in all those recreational activities, no matter the, you know, time of the day. Now with winter months approaching, it's going to get dark pretty early. So we need to have things, you know, add infrastructure that keeps and streamline in a way that, you know, the day-to-day life or the activities do not fluctuate with the season of the year or, you know, time of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Grassi.
Thank you for the question. Well, you know, you may not know, but once University Place won the award for Most Walkable City by Golden Sneakers Award. And so we have walkers in our community, people that love to use our sidewalks. And we need more of them. When I'm outdoor belling, I doorbell hundreds of homes and a recurring theme is when will more sidewalks come in? So we have to make sidewalks an attainable priority for families as they're out meeting their neighbors and bike lanes. And we have a lot of commuters, people in this city, they live here and they commute out. But they also have, they're meeting transportation at the TCC commuter station and others. So we need to make sure that we are enhancing those bike lanes to be able to be easy access to transit stations. And also carpooling is a wonderful opportunity for our community. I'm passionate about our community, knowing each other, knowing our residents. And the wonderful thing that we, opportunity we have are the parking lots in our city can be used for carpooling opportunities. And so sidewalks, making sure we're on track to keep those coming, that is a wonderful enhancement of our city that we're going to continue to do and make those bike lanes possible, make bikers possible. And then also carpooling opportunities that make a resident safer, that make, get to know each other, that are also great for the environment, all three ways that we can address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham.
Yes. All lanes have been added since incorporation and they have remained a high priority. As the park commissioner, I know for, for good that we are working on weight binding signs. That's another added to the infrastructures and the roads that we have here in University Place. Bike paths, lighted paths, lighting. I know there's a lot of structures going on, even on my road, Chambers Bay Road currently that just got completed. Circ Park, we're doing a lot of construction on that road and just as Sadiya said, that there's actual, you know, new developments that have come there, new infrastructures that are coming out to add to the roads and the safety of, of our pedestrians. And parks and, and walkways are vital. We're creating paths throughout most of our parks, walking paths, and we want to maintain that. So our roads are very, very important to us. And if you drive down any one of them, you'll see that there's paving, there's, there's lighting, there's all kinds of things that are going on within those roads. And I know that once we get those weight binding signs for the parks and for the roads to find your way through the city, that will also add to the, to the growth and development and the beauty of our community.
Thank you. Frank Boykin, please.
The opportunities that we have in the beautification of University Place and the walkability and the expectation of how that's unfolded, I'm reminded that my wife is one of those walkers that get to enjoy Chambers Bay. And as I think about that surrounding area and how this all have come about, I do remember from being in University Place for nearly twenty years and being a planning commissioner for at least a decade, how there was really challenge as to whether or not we'd be able to see this vision of real walkability, the impacts that have pushed through the nationally celebrated infrastructure that we have as a result. These things weren't by accident and these things weren't without oddly enough, hard fights. And what has since been clear is that this vision that has been throughout has served us well. UP is attractive as well as the expectation of our community character being preserved. And in the expectation of moving forward, I just want to ensure that as I had that charge as your planning commissioner in this leadership, that that's the expectation that I have. If you'll give me the opportunity to serve next, to really underscore those things that really bring us together, that really lift us in ways that ensure that our quality of life is at the forefront and what is really in the background is the impact of how it all helps us be.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Melanie Grassi. What plans do you have to fill the gaps in rec programs for our kids and to, and to improve the rec center? Melanie Grassi.
Thank you for the question. I'm passionate about bringing our Parks and Rec Department back to University Place. And we, it's a vital need for quality of life, to have vibrant youth sports, to have activities for seniors. But it's not something that the city has to take on all our own. We have wonderful partners that are already providing services in the city that we can come alongside and partner with and provide access to our residents. It's vital that we take a, a full advantage of partnerships. We don't have to do all of the heavy lifting on our own through the general fund. We have to bring about all the ones, all the partners that are already using our beautiful dedicated green spaces and come alongside of them. I'm also excited to be mentored by Judy from the City of Furcrest, who has a wonderful Parks and Rec Department. And she is excited to help me lead in this capacity, help learn how their program has been successful and what we can do to bring services like that to our community. Partnerships are vital. We have to do it with partners. We can't do it on our own. This city was built on volunteers. We have to get back to that. We have to be able to dead, roll up our sleeves and serve and meet the neighbor across the street, get to know the kid that's playing on my son's T-ball team and be able to help and do all of this together. We don't need to take it on our own. The city can serve as a, a leader and as a coordinator, but we can come alongside the partners that are already providing the services and take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham, what are your plans for rec programs for our kids and to improve the rec center?
Yes. So as the park commissioner currently, we have to remind ourselves that the recreation was voted down three to one in twenty twelve and thirteen. The levy did not pass. It failed. So since then, we've been accommodating what we can to keep programs vital and alive in our community alongside making sure that all the seventeen parks that we have that are half-developed and undeveloped, still strong and maintaining its level of visibility. Currently, we have a site plan that's studying right now for Cirque Park to indicate our, our expansion options for the recreation in, in, in University Place. We have twenty-two acres over there that we're looking at what we can do to accommodate that. So next month, we'll be having some surveys that the community will be able to weigh in on and, and, and decide what it is that they actually do want over there. We can rely on outside entities, but we have to remember that the Furcrest Community Center is subsidized currently. So it's currently not hitting its general fund. And we don't want to run out of money. We don't run into financial trouble like we did before. So we can have one today, but we'd run out of money in ten years. So we want to be thoughtful and intentional about the way that we finance this project. We want to care for our community and we want to do things in a thoughtful, considerable, fiscally responsible way. So I think going forward, we're just going to be very intentional as park commissioners to decide what's going to go there based on what we hear from our community. And if that means a rec center, then we're going to work hard to figure out what that means for us and financially do it responsibly.
Thank you. Frank Boykin, please.
Absolutely. The name of the game here is partnership. We absolutely have to take advantage of being able to utilize partnerships. And to me, that means relationships, relationships that have been nourished, relationships that have been leveraged such that a solution that's going to take a heavy lift or more than just what we can't do alone, we can do together approach, that's what we tap into. The expectation of reimagining what's possible. It starts first with leadership. It starts being part of a collaborative team invested in moving University Place forward. I would purport to you, I'm exactly that person for this opportunity. And in leading those types of efforts where a visionary leader is clearly being able to help us see things that we hadn't seen before by ensuring that we use the experience that has been part of actually doing the work. That would look like this. I have seen in a very real way that University Place is just the right size to not only do robust consideration, but it's just small enough also to collaborate, to innovate, to test. And this is the type of approach that we'll need, not only when it comes to how we might look at opportunities for recreation differently, but also how might we look at the additional challenging opportunities that are ahead of us. We are ready. We are ready. I am ready. I look for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Sadiya Wahid.
Yes, ma'am. Um, this is a fun question and um again, very passionate about it. I have three young ones of my own. And I feel this is really important for the, you know, the emotional, physical development and growth of our youth. And not just the younger ones, but you know, kids, teenagers who are about to enter into adulthood. So uh recreational um facilities or recreational opportunities are not only important for um, you know, just uh like another tagline for a city, but they uh will go a long way. We don't have to look far. We can look at cities like Furcrest and see how they made it possible. It's a similar city size. Uh, we can partner with schools and see what we can do. Um, like Alicia said, we have to be fiscally responsible. So keeping in mind the resources we have, the resources we're able to spend. We brainstorm ideas, we partner with organizations, we partner with different cities. And we try, you know, we apply for grants, we bring, we we combine resources. Uh, we partner with senior programs, we partner with schools, we partner with NGOs and we bring something. If we can get a recreation center, we bring some programs. Um, you know, our our senior citizens need, they have so much knowledge and wealth of experience to impart. We can partner with them. We can teach some vocational skills to our young ones, um to our teenagers, so they are ready to step into adulthood. We can um, but like Alicia alluded to, the levy that was not passed, it uh begs to conduct a community assessment, um community need assessment, which will let us know what is needed. Uh, we can use social media, we can use newspapers, any kind of media. Uh, you know, we can use town hall meetings to assess the need of the community first and see what we need and then conserve our resources. We don't have to go really big, but we have to provide little pockets of opportunities here and there. So.
Yeah, sorry, apparently our timer stopped for some reason and you couldn't see it. But I think that's our technical problem. Sorry about that. Um, okay, so next question. Um, and we'll start with Alicia Cunningham. Um, what do you propose that the city of uh University Place do uh to address climate change and climate induced disasters? And we'll start with Alicia Cunningham.
Good housing policy. A good housing policy is good climate policy. Denser cities means less suburban sprawl and that means less driving and impact on the environment. So I think that we're gonna quickly realize that once we start resolving other problems, other problems will will resolve themselves. I think it's smart, you know, I had a gentleman when I was door knocking, talk about the blowers that we use for the parks, fossil fuels. So let's start making those small changes. But I think overall, once we have good housing policies, it'll inoculate uh our contribution to the climate and we'll be able to 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 manage that more effectively.
Thank you. Apparently, we're now going to cards. So just noticed that there will be cards put up that one minute and uh thirty seconds and fifteen seconds. Um, apparently our automatic timer is not working. Uh, Frank Boykin.
Good planning. Not so surprisingly, these types of considerations are what we actually plan for. Not just in our comprehensive plan, it gives us guides to how it is that we would build out infrastructure, not just in the best of times, but in times that are challenging. And so when we think that there are things that are imminent, or if we just wanna be prudent, we just plan. And how we plan tells us exactly what it is that sets us available for outcomes that we anticipate. Here is a chance to look at all of our policies in a way that says, are we really ready for that which is imminent? Are we really ready for uh that that is a natural disaster? And I would submit to you, the short answer is yes. And it's in how we have utilized partnerships with one another, how we have fostered, nurtured and leveraged relationships within the city and our surrounding uh city uh council. How we have positioned uh our response units, how we've risk positioned our residents to be educated among these um efforts and how we have been impactful when it comes to us being ready. So I am confident that what we have a chance to do here is just affirm. And in affirming that in which we plan for, because we recognize the use of good planning, this is a way in which we can ensure that our our city and our residents come together yet again to handle what's ahead of us.
Thank you. Sadiya Wahid.
Thank you. Um. First of all, we need to create awareness with the public. We need to create some excitement about, you know, reusing um recycling and uh reducing. Uh, we need to advocate for climate uh policies. As council members, I think we have the voice, we have the platform to push for those kind of policies. We need to um encourage people to um use public transport. And that's another thing that we need to really, um, we all have cars. It's the convenience, but we need to make it exciting. We need to make it uh the awareness in a way where people want to take that step themselves, use more public transport. Uh, again, use, you know, create more sidewalks, you know, have more street lights. So people are able to walk to work. If there's, it's close by, they, you know, they're able to bike, they're able to use, um, you know, um, electric scooters and stuff that will uh, you know, will be less traffic. It will be less um, you know, um impact on the uh climate. So uh things like that. And also support renewable energy and um green energy plans. Most of all, I would say, you know, this is create an infrastructure where people are not relying on their own means of transport. Those kind of things and um, you know, encourage insulation, um create public awareness about unplugging. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie Grassi.
Well, climate change, it takes critical thinking, it takes communication. It takes um working in cooperation with leaders at the state and federal level. I look forward to leaning into those developed um relationships that I have already from experts at the state and federal level on climate change. It also requires us looking to use sustainable products wherever necessary and fiscally responsible to do so. As we're thinking about planning and as we're growing, every opportunity for growth is an opportunity to use a sustainable product. And so we need to look at that. We need to look at what that is going to mean cost-wise. We need to look at grants that are available to help our city um well prepare for the realities of climate change. Because this is a reality that affects all of us. And as University Place, we can do a lot as a local jurisdiction. But we're also going to need our state and federal partners to come alongside of us um to help to communicate, to educate, and then ultimately fund for projects so that we can be ready and um that we can have the adequate response as our climate continues to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, um, we'll start with Frank Boykin and we'll just do uh one minute for this this question. Um, according to the twenty twenty census, um, almost twenty percent of University Place residents, nearly one in five speak a language other than English at home. How will you ensure that the city services and civic life is accessible to all? Not just those who speak another language, but residents who are visually and hearing impaired or disabled. Frank Boykin, one minute.
Thank you so much. What we wanna do is ensure that we are absolutely engaging in behavior that ensures that we see, hear and embrace cultures. Those differences make us better. Those differences are what actually ensures that we can be the best version of ourselves. That has to translate first from uh behavior next into policy. We should expect that civility and the expectation of being better uh happens because we're intentional with it. It also should be the expectation of what we have in our leadership. Examples, they're always clear, making the point to embrace this expectation and to ensure that this is how we govern ourselves. And as a result, this is who we are and by byproduct, this is how we govern. So we set those examples by first taking uh responsibility, self-discipline and then recognizing again, that it's the differences and diversity that makes us better. We put that in front of expectations for one another and we make a policy forward because of it.
Thank you. Sadiya Wahid.
Thank you. Um. I'm an immigrant. I speak a different language at home. I uh speak a few languages, regional languages uh from back home. Um, we need to create a system where there's a translation of documents. So it's easily accessible to people who do not speak English or who are not well versed with that. Um, get more interpreters, um bilingual staff, uh hire bilingual staff. We need to have language access hotline. That is something that we could create. It would need some resources, but we can uh again collaborate or partner with someone. Or we can have volunteers. Um, this also provides an opportunity for our youth that this could be incorporated as part of our uh youth or after-school program, um giving an opportunity for um, you know, teenagers or youth who want to or even our senior citizens who want to use their time uh for interpreting. Um, websites, apps availability that can uh translate in real time and make it more accessible. Also, we need to do a cultural competency training, so it is more um easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Grassi, please.
Thank you. Well, we have to be ready um to serve everyone with excellence. And that means um thoughtful communication in our style and our thought and our communication style, whether it's in print, in signage, in digital communication, to make sure that our web, our breadth is wide and available to everyone with excellence. Means that they're not searching um for the language that they need. They're not searching for the access that they need, but that we're proactive and that we're already providing it. That we're providing that through local partners that are great at um giving those resources, the local health department, Pierce County Services. We can lean into great partnerships um that do it really well and help us. And everything that we do, from every sign that we put up, to every communication that is put out, to every small business owner that wants to be ready to serve every language um in our city, we need to make sure that they're also thinking about that, that as we're helping them plan and economic development grows, that we're thinking about them at the forefront. And that comes back to serving everybody with excellence.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham, please.
Yeah, so we're already as a city required to provide availability for translation services. And we should constantly be revisiting what that looks like and making sure that we're aligned our goals with the community and population that we're serving. In my nonprofit experience, I've been at the helm of translating all membership paperwork and productivity that we are providing for our our youth and our families and our communities. So um just being, having an ear to the ground and making sure that we're accommodating everyone in our community. The inclusive playground is one that we're doing and that's one for kids with disabilities. So being intentional and being in tune with everyone that we're serving and understanding the equity and access and opportunities that we need to provide for everyone in our community. And as we grow, we're gonna need to continue to revisit that on a case-by-case basis and an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Last question. Um, again, one minute. I know we should really have more time to answer some of these. What is your, and we'll start with Sadiya Wahid. What is your plan to engage young people in civic life? Tell us your plan to engage youth sixteen to nineteen, as well as your plan for those twenty to twenty-nine. And is it the same plan? Sadiya Wahid, please.
Um, again, this is the um, you know, population that we need to really focus on. This is our future, uh goes without saying. Uh, we can have separate different programs for both those demographics, those age groups, uh tailored to what is you know, needed in that um, you know, age groups. Again, we can partner with schools where they go and see what is already being provided and what is lacking. Um, say for example, kids, when they go into adulthood or, you know, when we're living under our parents' roof, they do all the taxes and budgeting and everything. So just a small example, teach them how to do taxes, simple taxes, teach them how to uh budget, how to save, how to invest a little bit of money or how to even grow your own small business from home. Uh, again, we can partner with senior citizens. They have so much uh experience, so much knowledge and wisdom to impart. And I'm sure they will benefit from the company uh from the time that uh, you know, the the this is called uh partnering not just for a cause, but uh consolidating our resources, our limited resources. So uh definitely things tailored to each age group. Thank you.
Melanie Grassi, what is your plan to engage young people in civic life? Tell us your plan for those sixteen to nineteen and twenty to twenty-nine. And is it the same plan?
Thank you so much. Well, we have a wonderful school district to partner with for that age group from sixteen and to nineteen there. We need to know what um gaps are being um and that we can come in alongside and fill in those gaps. I think that it's really important in this day and age, as we talk about a housing crisis, to get our um young people excited about the opportunity, about attainable housing, financial leadership, that what that goes into. The practical skills that it needs um to own a home, to get a living wage job. And what that's going to look like as like, we want our young people coming from University Place to succeed and thrive. And so we need to provide opportunities for them that are most also exciting, but also practical. Because you have to be able to have an attractional opportunity for young people to start, to get engaged, to get something to be excited about. And then to get a dream, to get a hold of a dream and have something to grow. There's wonderful people that are doing that, organizations push for dreams and others that are active in our city that we can also come alongside and partner with that are doing incredible work. And so we have to give them a dream and then help them get there, get to that, yes.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham, what's your plan to engage young people in civic life?
People can't be what they can't see. So representation matters. Um, as a mom with four sons, I have one that has special needs and it's important to me to make sure that he sees um that you can make a difference. And no matter what walk of life you're, what path you're down. We used to have um youth co-commissions and we used to have youth council and bringing that back would be something great. We need to engage with our community. We have one high school, one you know, one junior high, four middle schools or four elementaries and two middle schools. We need to be able to bring them to the table. We have a small enough community and a tight enough community that we have to have representation. I will be the first black woman on the city council in University Place and that's good and bad all at once. And so you need to see yourself in others. And so making sure that we're using our power for good and engaging with these young people to show them that we can make a difference. My day job is youth engagement and youth development and I've always maintained a level of reflection within that and making sure that you're an example for those and that are coming up behind you because it matters and what they're, they're watching you. And so it's important that you, you have, you set an example for them. Um, I definitely know that that's something that all all young people deserve.
Thank you. Frank Boykin.
The most exciting thing that we can do is encourage engagement that allows you to see the light come on when it comes to a youth. The most important thing that we can contribute, in my view, is ensuring that you're engaged in a way that has that um experience at the forefront. It's about making sure that we constantly provide new experiences to our youth. It's about making sure that we connect uh partners that have examples that are very clear, that help youth find ways to be that much more impactful, to be that much more extraordinary. And there's a number of ways to do this. We've got uh infrastructure right now that we could just do more with. We can look at our state legislator, for example, uh that actually has a paging uh system that ensures that we move youth into not just responsible ways of civility civility and uh understanding governance, but also making sure that there's a fun way to approach how it is that life happens. A number of different things we can do.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We'll change the order of the opening statements. So we'll start with Melanie Grass and Alicia Cunningham and Frank Boykin and end with Sadiya Wahid. So Melanie Grassi, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to meet you tonight, to be a part of this. I want to reiterate that I am excited to serve you. I may have served you at our small business and our restaurant. I may have served you as a volunteer at one of our community events. I may have served you at our food pantry. And now I'm asking um for the opportunity to serve you in this way. What I have learned is that our city is special and I wanna help it thrive. I wanna keep it safe. I wanna keep public safety our number one priority. I wanna fight for vibrant Parks and Recs Department to come back, to serve our youth, our seniors, our families. And I wanna support our small business growth. I wanna support the ones we have, help what we have grow and attract new s- small business. But I want to serve in each of those capacities. I'm humbly asking to serve you and I'm thankful for this opportunity. I humbly ask for your vote on November seventh and I invite you to visit my website, grassyforup.com to see my wide support, bipartisan endorsements and why I am running for this opportunity. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Alicia Cunningham.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. University Place is a unique and tranquil city. Making sure that we love where we live is important to me just as much as it is important to you. I have seen the good and I've seen the bad of the community throughout its evolution. And I will make it a priority to ensure that we keep our community's integrity intact and all of us at the table. I don't have connections to past decision-making or existing power structures that may have put us in a bad spot. But what I do have is smart business management skills, relentless energy and fortitude to move our city ahead in the direction that it needs to go. I'm a fresh face with fresh perspective and I look forward to serving all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Boykin.
I'm so excited to be here. Experience matters. I'm ready. I'm a candidate for University Place City Council, position number two, and I know together we can make a difference. I am humbly asking you for your I'm a candidate for University Place City Council, position number two, and I know together we can make a difference. I am humbly asking you for your support. I'm asking you for your support and vote. Because I know that I care very deeply about what matters to our families, safe schools, vibrant business climate, community connectedness. I am confident that if you give me the next opportunity to serve you, well, I will do so. I have a heart to serve and I am excited about serving you. Experience matters. I want to be the next upward voice on our University Place City Council to serve you.
Thank you. Sadiya Wahid.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you so much for the very thoughtful questions. This was very educational for me. I have to say, I do not have the experience that my esteemed colleagues here or my, you know, my fellow candidates have. But I do bring the humility. I want to be educated. I do bring this, I have this earnest pledge to serve with integrity, with humility, with honesty. I will always put my community's needs above and, you know, everything else, whatever decision that I'm, you know, am honored enough to participate and it will always be something that benefits our community, our residents. I'm a regular person. I'm a mom. I'm a wife. I've been a stay-at-home mom. I have a lot of education. I have a lot of skills. But I want to put them to use, serving my community and giving back. When we moved here a few years ago, we fell in love with the city. I want to continue the great work that our council members, our mayor are already doing. Just bringing another, you know, different perspective and different approach to what is, you know, already. Thank you so much.
Thank you. In ballot order, the candidates for University Place City Council, position two are Frank Boykin and Sadiya Wahid. And for position seven are Melanie J. Grassi and Alicia Cunningham. Your ballot will be mailed out on October twentieth. Be sure to vote early and no later than November seventh. We would like to thank the candidates, the timekeeper Terry Baker and your patience for dealing with our technical issues with the timing. And then we'd also like to thank the, the, our community cosponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, the AAUW of Puyallup, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, the NAACP of Tacoma, the Summer Waller Community Association and Tacoma Urban League. You can see other League of Women voter candidate forums at LWVTPC.org. That's LWVTPC.org. Read your voter's pamphlet, look at vote411.org. That's vote411.org. Where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do everything that you can to be an educated voter. And please don't forget to vote on November seventh. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.